It wasn't comfortable for him. Now that he's a grandfather, he says I love you to my son every time he sees him. My advice to all the fathers out there, forget the cultural restrictions. They grow up way too fast for you to waste even a single precious moment.
Right at the door.
Hi, I'm Smokey Bear, and I made an assistant to help you prevent wildfires.
Dude, I've got this. I've been camping since I was five years old.
But I am the camping influencer.
You know what? I'll bet you five bucks. Assistant Smokey, what is the best way to put out a campfire?
Mm-hmm.
To put out a campfire, drown with water, stir, drown again.
What?
Then make sure the fire is out cold by feeling with the back of your hand.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
I'll take the five bucks.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work.
No, I'm gonna add, I'll just, I'll bring it up and add it.
What is it?
You belong in Curry County.
Oh.
The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection.
Shit.
This is the threshold of the west.
He's always hugging, you know, I've noticed, there's a pattern.
Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest.
He never hugs me.
Curry County.
He knows you'll grab his gun.
We good, Miranda?
When I was in foster care, I never knew when I would have to move. Then one day I was adopted. My new parents opened their hearts and came to me. My parents cooked my favorite breakfast for me every morning. My parents take me on trips I never thought I would go.
There she is, yeah, we're good.
We're good to go.
Alright, so, I got the, we're good to go, so, uh, thank you for coming, everyone. Before we get started, I just wanna go over a couple of things about, um, our business meeting tonight. Uh, specific to public comments, if you'd like to make a comment, which I have a few, please fill out a public, um, comment card, and, um, put your name and information on it, and I'll add it to the list. And if you would like to speak tonight, uh, we need to have a card. A lot of times, what happens is we start talking about some passionate topics, and we'll have someone raise their hand and wanna speak, um, and we, we can't do that. Uh, we need to have a card with your information, so we can keep track of it, and it helps our staff, um, when we do the minutes for the meeting, and that's why we do that. When you do speak this, this evening, uh, remember, you'll have three minutes. Commissioner Trost has the timers, and he will be working the, the timers tonight. You'll see a green, yellow, and red light, and we ask you to stay within three minutes. If you go over, then, uh, Commissioner Trost will let you know, and will ask you to, to wrap up your comments. Um, when you speak tonight, please state your name and your address, and be aware of the three-minute time that you have, and you don't have to be nice to us, but please be nice to our staff. Uh, they work very hard for these meetings, and we would appreciate that. And now, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so I know we're gonna have a couple of amendments tonight, um, so what do we, what do we have?
So, uh, Chair, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to amend the agenda. I wanna add, I think it'd probably be appropriate, we don't have presentations on here, so I'd like to add probably, uh, discussion item B, um, banana belt cleanup effort.
Okay, you mean C?
We have B. Oh, do we have a?
We have a B, we have an A and a B.
Oh, I must not have the amended agenda. Okay, so then a C.
So a C?
Yeah.
And that's, uh, banana belt cleanup?
Correct.
And then, I've got one as well. Um, we had intended to, um, prepare a certificate to present to the, um, Red Cross members here tonight, acknowledging March as Red Cross Month, and unfortunately, that certificate got paused partway through, the computer froze up, and then, uh, uh, our person is not available at this point, so we will finish up the, the certificate, but I just wanted to make sure that we, that we have that. Um, if we could add that as a discussion action item, perhaps, um, and so that we can make mention of that as D.
Alright, we'll put the Red Cross to D.
What's B? Ordinance. Oh, okay, I know what that one is.
Okay, anything, uh, John, from you?
Nope.
Ted, any, anything else?
That, that'll do it.
It seemed like there was something else we needed to amend, um.
Uh, we were, oh, oh, I know, we were gonna, um, we were gonna, um, add to the consent agenda, the modification of the CRO.
That's right.
Job description in accordance with the, with the sheriff's, uh, recommendations.
So F?
Yep.
CRO. CRO, job description.
Modifications.
Amendments, modifications. Okay.
Alright, anything else, Jay? Any other amendments?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended. A second, Ted?
The motion is second, all in favor say yes.
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 And yes, motion passes three to zero. Uh, next, we will move to public comments, and I'll call them as I have them in front of me here. Uh, first is Dave Barnes.
Good evening, I'm Dave Barnes. I'm here speaking tonight as a citizen and a resident of the Sunken Grade subdivision up Jerry's Flat Road opposite Eagleview. About a month or so ago, somebody made a comment on Facebook about it on a Saturday, and Monday morning, first thing, the road department trucks started pulling up, and they had it flattened out, repaved, and were gone by lunchtime. It was just an amazing response. Well, the road is starting to sink again in the same spot. We just had someone come in and do engineering for a, a long-term permanent fix over on North Bank Road. I've been told over and over that the problem over there is that a hundred feet down the hill is where it's soft, and I was wondering if there was any possibility of maybe getting another engineer out there to go take a fresh look at it, and see if maybe something, the conditions that have changed since the last time an engineer looked, maybe there's something that can be done about it now that would, would be a more permanent fix to it. So I just wanted to ask you to put that on your radar, and to take it into consideration, to getting someone out there to take a look at it again. It's, it's only been a month this time since it's going down, but we have had real heavy rains, so.
But it is almost constant. I mean, it's, it's steady, steady attention to that, all year, every year, basically.
Oh, yes, it's, it goes, it's a never-ending process. There's four or five times probably during the winter, someone will be out there fixing that section. So that's why I was wondering if maybe we could look at it again, and see if we can come up with something a little bit more permanent than that.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to the road department.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
The riverbed is paved, it, oh, down there, all that pavement ends up down there.
And next up, public comment is Lori Van Zant.
Do you mind if we switch positions?
Sure.
First, and then Lori follow after me?
We'll call Patrick Hollinger then.
Too tall. Yeah. I'm Patrick Hollinger, citizen here in Gold Beach, and, uh, Gold Beach Main Street, which is a local nonprofit group here. Uh, they do a lot of good work for freshening up, uh, the city, and bringing events to town, and getting a community, a lot of community involvement. And they reached out to me, uh, earlier in the week regarding an event that they wanna host here at the Fairgrounds, the event center, and, uh, it's gonna be called the Southern Oregon Coast Legends Festival. And first week of October is when they would like to do it. We're looking to extend our summer season just a little bit longer to help local businesses here in Gold Beach, but also Brookings and Port Orford. The, uh, kinda the, the, the theme behind it is, is legend, so, you know, you have your Sasquatch, and so we're gonna, there's that local fad that's going on currently in the Pacific Northwest, but there's also the history of our county. So being able to get, uh, our local county businesses to come, take a booth, host an event, or an activity, or a competition that showcases their business to help bring them business, you know, not only in our community, but outside of our county as well, is what we're, we're trying to base this around. So, you know, we'd wanna have the dunk tank, or axe throwing, or, you know, have a cannery come and, and showcase what they do, flaying fish, or cracking crab, or whatever. Have pumpkin patch for the kids, um, get the sheriff involved here, maybe throw him in the dunk tank, you know, and have search and rescue, you know, maybe get involved and showcase, and do some events with kids. Have speakers come, um, and then just emphasize what we have here locally, for our legends, our lore, our history. What makes Curry County Curry County, and, and bring the Pacific Northwest here to better help our, our county grow, and bring some wealth here for a little bit longer during our, our tour season. So, um, thank you guys very much. This is just a, an initial introduction to that. And, uh, I'll pass this now on to Lori, which will, you know, she'll kinda piggyback on what I'm doing here. Little bit.
So, uh, I guess we should really focus on the dunk tank while we're here. Cause we have some wonderful potential business sitting right in front of us here that we'd love to have involved, and, um, you know, my husband and I were talking last night, and we're like, well, you can have the three balls for twenty-five dollars, or whatever, and then you can have the hundred-dollar opportunity where you just get to go up and hit it, and bang, they go right in. We did call a purveyor to see if they have heated dunk tanks, so we can be a little nicer to you, but, um. So, anyway, it's really exciting, because the way we've, we're kind of bringing everything together, we're looking at, um, Gold Beach Community Fund grant, we're looking at Mill Casinos, Bannon Dunes, you know, KUS Curry Electric, and we're looking at TLT money for the county and city, and what they can contribute to this. Um, in the end, the, not only is the ultimate goal to have this be an ongoing annual event, this'll be the first, and we have to tread kindly on ourselves in regards to the success of number one, but we, we think we're getting a lot of structure in place that's gonna make it a success. Um, and focusing both on the fun side of a really great band that Patrick has found that we hope we get, and then, um, beer and food, and probably twenty booths on the inside of Dosia Suite, and ten booths on the outside, all of which would be booths that sponsor events on the grounds. Whether it's lumberjacking, whether it's axe throwing, we even are thinking about inflatable axe throwing for children, and so we're, we're trying to combine the children and adult events all together. Um, and so, with that said, are there any questions?
Sounds great, Lori.
Does it? We're excited, you know, things that bring Curry County here, as Patrick has said, in the fringe season, is a great thing, and um, one of our goals would be that it helps fund Gold Beach Main Street, which we are continually struggling to get grants, and stay solvent, and move forward with the undergrounding that we have coming up, and a lot of big visions that we'd like to see happen for our community, and the economic development of our town, so. We've had a great preliminary talk with Miranda about this, and she seems very supportive, and so we're excited about that, and, and so, uh, thank you.
Yeah, I would just say the, the one thing that I think's been talked about for years is bringing lumberjack games to Curry County.
Yes.
Would be, uh, a really neat event, um, and, you know, also display a lot of our, our history.
Yes.
And, and everything else, so, um, sounds like a really good deal.
We're, we're thinking of combining that, too, with, um, Indian history.
Yeah.
And folklore of that, so, the combination of it all fits our area, and it's really exciting to us. Thank you.
Yeah, Ted was a log-rolling.
Champion. Yeah, he's, he wanted to defend that championship.
Ted, you were what, in your twenties when that happened, right?
I was never a log-rolling champion.
I thought.
No, that's, you made that up.
Word on the street.
Word on the street, yeah.
Bull of the woods, that's, that was what he.
Um, next up, is it Jeanette? Jeanette.
I'm Jeanette Peterson, and we live, um, well, our address is Port Orford, we live way south of there. Um, and I wanted to talk about property taxes today, and I have sort of two different comments and questions and suggestions, I guess. Um, the first is around the law enforcement levy that we will be voting on in May. And, you know, the, the newspaper said taxes could go up a little more than three percent, and in our case, they're going up twenty-seven percent. And because we live on a somewhat sizable piece of acreage, um, our assessed value's pretty high. It's a pretty big nut in one year. And we totally support twenty-four-seven Sheriff Patrol. Sheriff John Ward and his group are all we've got. We have no city police where we are. And so, we, we're very supportive of it. I think what I'd like to see is maybe a little bit more information about what else, cause I think the eight million dollars that has been indicated that it will raise, it's a lot of money, and I realize maybe there's some things with the jail, maybe infrastructure, and, but just, I think a little more detail would help us and other county residents say, yeah, we need this. Curry County has one of the lowest property tax rates in Oregon, and so, fully support an increase, um, but this is a big one. And I'm not sure that what, you know, has been in the paper and so forth has really prepared people for how big it is, and what we're getting for it, okay? So that's number one. The second one is a real pet peeve of mine in property taxes, and Commissioner Pash actually did a lot of work around this, um, gosh, five years ago, I think, and it has to do with Southwest Oregon Community College. I, we pay more in property tax to them, just them, than the general fund for the county. It's infuriating. I went and looked at their spring semester catalog for the classes at the Curry campus. Well, there's twenty-eight listed, but thirteen of those are held at the Brookings High School. So, fifteen classes, they have beautiful building, that building is not paid for. I mean, how, I realize it's difficult to change a special tax district. Do you know how to do that? Do you need to get a petition, or, or what, what has to happen? If you go back and look at what Commissioner Pash did, Curry County residents are paying more per person than KUS is. And, so, can you help there?
So, I'll, I'll, uh, talk a little bit about some of the information around the levy. I'll let maybe Jay talk about, uh, the special district issue. You are correct, we are the second lowest property taxing rate in the state of Oregon, and we have the second highest special district number in the state of Oregon, so. Yet, that is very impactful on the amount of money that comes into the general fund. So some of the things that are coming up surrounding information related to the levy are, we will have a website for people to go to that will have, uh, some very specific details, uh, about the levy in the website. Um, uh, there will be somewhat of a question-answer type, uh, situation with that. We will also have a QR code that people can go to, and, uh, click on the QR code, enter their information, and then they'll know exactly uh, what, uh, the levy would mean financially to them. So we'll have that information, um, in there as well. We are scheduling some town halls that we will have, uh, multiple times, uh, multiple locations throughout the county, uh, to have those discussions. We've, uh, talked with Sheriff Ward, with our district attorney's office, um, and, and we'll have those representatives there as well to have open discussions with the community, so they understand, um, the ins and outs of what, basically what they're paying for. Um, what you're paying for in this levy really is twenty-four-seven coverage, which we have never seen here in this county before, so, um, it's a, it's a, it's a real big opportunity to, to make an impact in public safety, and you've lived here a long time. You have seen, um, you've, you've seen some of the changes that Measure One Ten has, uh, created, and, and.
Didn't vote for it, by the way.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that Curry County did, um, but you've, you've seen the impacts of that, and, as, as well as some of the other uh, upward trends that we're seeing in, uh, some of our crime, uh, here in Curry County. So, um, the other thing is, the, uh, the levy will impact the, the jail, and we will be able to improve and increase the, uh, ability of our jail to continue to house prisoners from Brookings, and Gold Beach, and Port Orford, and, uh, and, and maintain what we're doing. The district attorney will be able to continue with prosecuting, you know, all crimes, uh, that we see here in the county. So, there is a, there is a lot of very positive things and opportunities towards public safety that we have never seen before, and we will have an oversight, uh, committee to ensure that the money that the people pay goes to public safety. So those things will be there.
And, and we, we totally support it. It is a big, it, it's a big increase in one year, and, and, you know, Curry County also has the second oldest population.
Yeah.
Um, of any county in Oregon, and so a lot of people are on fixed incomes.
Uh-huh.
Um, retired, whatever, and so I, I think planning for that is also something financially that, that people need to do, because.
It, it is. You're, you're absolutely right, and that is why, uh, the, the, uh, public meetings that we'll be having are so, so important and so impactful, and we'll be, we'll be announcing those in the near future, we'll be putting those on the website, we'll be putting those in the newspaper, et cetera.
And that, that's great, and I appreciate that. I think another thing that might be helpful in that communication is what, what hap, what after five years, what happens then? You know, and, and maybe there'll be another revenue stream that will help support.
There may be, and, there may be, and Commissioner Trost is closer to that than me, so I'll let him talk about that, and then maybe you can talk about special districts also.
Yeah, so, um, well, first of all, thank you for coming here and having this approach to the conversation. Um, it's really impactful, um, for, for many. Anybody who watches will get questions answered tonight. Um, the, so, about the five-year thing. So, the idea, the hope, the hope, right? The hope is that, um, we are able to get back to harvesting our ONC timberlands. Um, so, a quick run-up on that, so that was obviously, um, that, that, that shutdown, which is one of the largest reasons why we're in, one of the, one of the major reasons why we have the second lowest property tax, because it was offset by those timber dollars, and then when those, when we were unable to continue to log, um, due to legislation, uh, that's where we became with our financial woes. Now, the ONC, uh, committee, uh, which I'm on, is, uh, we won the initial court case. Um, and, uh, the current administration, uh, the Biden administration appealed that on the last day to appeal. We lost in the appeal, in the appellate court in DC, three to one, or two to one, and we have now appealed that decision to the Supreme Court, which we're hoping to get a ruling on within that five-year span. So, that could be the bridge that gets us to long-term, um, funding. Uh, if that doesn't occur, then I think what we would be looking at is the potential for, uh, a renewed five-year levy, or uh, the potential that, you know, maybe it's like Josephine County, where they're like, no, no, we just wanna have a permanent rate for law enforcement, and so. But this'll give us a, a window to be able to see how that court case progresses, while still maintaining, um, the much-needed public safety in our county. And so I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
As far as the special districts, um, so, I think you, you obviously are not alone in your concerns, um, with, uh, with, with some of our, our, our taxing districts. Uh, specifically, the one you brought up is, is in question a lot, um, and I, I wanna be able to give you the, the, the right answer. Um, and, and I don't, I'm not equipped with that right now. I'd wanna talk to the clerk, maybe she has to talk to the Secretary of State, to see what the steps are to be able to address that, um, in particular. So, I don't wanna give you any misinformation, or anybody who may be watching, uh, I'll give you the right information. So, did you? Um, maybe I can have you put your contact information on here, and then I will follow up with that.
And in my, in my past discussions with the clerk, it would require a vote of the people to.
Correct.
Dissolve the, the special district.
But how that vote occurs.
Right.
Is what's interesting. I know, you know, cause I know the board of commissioners can put, um, can put things on the ballot, um, but also citizens can as well, through a, uh, signature process. So I just wanna make sure we have the avenues, I, that really dialed in before I give you the, the wrong information.
That's great, thank you. I, I would also just like to say that, um, the work that you all have done to improve the county government in terms of the discipline around process and organization and so forth, really shows. And I think the county government is vastly improved. It's not as entertaining to watch. But I still send emails to court voice.
Well, thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette.
You can watch the Real Housewives of, uh.
Curry County?
Some, someplace else, but not Curry County, yeah.
Alright, so, uh, moving forward on the agenda, no further public comments, so now we will move to item four, consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
A motion is second, all in favor say yes.
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 And yes, motion passes three to zero. Moving on to, uh, discussion items, agenda, uh, number five. Um, Ted, you're up on presenting, uh, five A, which is proposal for land trade with a private party.
Alright, this, this, um, land trade arises out of the, of Curry County's, um, ownership of numerous, uh, very small tracts of land in what was, uh, um, intended to be a, a large subdivision called Pacific City years ago.
Lakeport.
Um, well, the, the town was supposed to be called Lakeport, but the, the plat was Pacific City. Um, it proved to be unworkable, apparently, for a variety of reasons, and, and the county ended up taking the vast majority of those parcels back in fourth location many, many, many years ago. Some, some pieces have been, uh, have, have stayed in private ownership, and one of the owners of one of those pieces, um, approached the county. Hazel Hofstes has submitted a request to trade one fifty-foot by one-hundred-foot parcel north of I Street in Langlois for one fifty-by-one-hundred-foot parcel south of Boy's Cove Road. Um, and the board of commissioners making this decision must con, consider relevant factors to this proposal, including access contiguous county properties, and any, any other item, or information available to them. Um, should the approval, unapproval be voted on, it will be subject to the property being free, the property we receive being free of liens and encumbrances upon receipt of a title report, and inspection by county staff in the field, and also no active enforcement actions on the property by DEQ, uh, Division of State Lands, or the EPA. Um, and if you look at the maps that are attached here, you can see, if you'll notice, that the. at the maps that are attached here, you can see, if you'll notice that the Hofstetter's property, if you look at the, this plat map, you'll see that it's surrounded, the properties surrounding it, that, that she's looking at, the, the property surrounding the property that's proposed to be traded to us is surrounded by county-owned properties. So this would make our, this would make our, our holdings more contiguous, and would also increase, as I understand it, it would increase access to the adjoining properties and, and, and increase the potential uses and choices available to the county as far as, as far as ultimately using this, this property. I, I know that we did have, I saw that an email had come in regarding concerns about this, and, and the emailer had proposed that it would be better to market these properties. And I'd just like to remind you that, that there is no infrastructure, there's no, there's, there's no, there's nothing here that really, that, that, you know, would provide something that was immediately buildable. But, but also, the county's in a unique position, as we were talking about, just with, with that taxing district you were just talking about. In the event that the county sells any real property that it owns, the county itself will receive only 6% of the, of the net proceeds of those sales. So that would, so in, in the event that you sold one of these little undeveloped lots for, say, I don't know, $10,000, you'd get $60. So it's, you know, it's, or 600. Yeah, 600.
Which would be, which would cost more to actually.
Yeah.
Do the work to sell than the county would actually benefit.
Right. And the rest of the money would be distributed to the other taxing districts. And with the, what, the county is much better served by doing land swaps. And, and one thing, by, by, by getting these properties, get, getting, getting it all one contiguous unit does make it swappable for something else that could be an income producer for taxpayers of Curry County. Say, for example, timber property like they've done in, in Coos County. A substantial portion of their tax base is offset by, by their timber revenue every year. And that would be a thing that, that with, with our county properties, I'd like, I'd like you Commissioners to consider that as we move forward. Maybe reallocating some of these properties and, and finding interested parties. I know that, I know that the road department has a, has a rock quarry down on South Fork of the, I mean, on the south bank of the Chetco that, that is not very useful to the road department in today's environment, but we might be able to swap that out for some property that would generate revenue for the county. So that's the thing that I'm working on right now, and I'll let you know as that develops.
On this particular land swap, do we have the surveyor, look at this review?
Yeah, we have the county surveyor met with the, met with the property owner, and, and we all discussed the, the options together.
Did Scott have an opinion?
Scott, Scott recommended that we make this.
Okay.
This trade.
Well, I'm, I, so I'm, I'm, I, I like the trade. It seems like a win-win. It, it allows them to have continuous property for some of the previous stuff that they own, and it also allows us to, so one of our pieces of property, if you notice in that plot map, is essentially kind of locked in because the road access property is not owned by the county at that area. So this piece actually allows, it's along the road, so it allows road access into the piece of property that the county does own. So it's, it's, it is definitely, it seems to be beneficial for, for both parties. And, and I also am in favor of what Ted has been proposing. It's, it's, I think it's, it would be, it would be foolish not to look at the opportunity for future land swaps. I, I had an opportunity to go explore the Coos Forest program. And, you know, they, right now, what they do is they have, they, they, they have 20,000 acres. They harvest on a 20-year rotation. They harvest 1,000 acres a year. And that nets them just over $3 million a year into their general fund. And, and it's, it's, their, their entire timber department is a team of three. And so it's, you know, we, we obviously live in an area that would be advantageous to explore that revenue source as, as, as much as we can.
Yep.
But yes, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of this land swap. It seems like it's a, it's a, it's a good win.
Yeah, no, I like the timber idea too, Jay. And I think when it comes to these private party things, I think we just keep looking at them as kind of a case-by-case basis and continue to evaluate and break them down the way we are. And when they make sense like this one, we'll follow through with it.
I just think as you go forward that you should, you know, when you're doing these things, you know, whenever there's a property, if, if you can, if you can figure out a way that the county ends up having something that's more workable for, for the long term, I think that's where you should be.
Sure.
Yep. All right. Any further discussion?
I went to the assessor's office, and they're, they're both valued exactly the same. They're the same size. So it's a, it's a push. It's apples for apples, and I'm in favor of it. So, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the, there's probably a written thing here, how to say it. The requested motion, instruct county legal counsel to proceed with the land trade, including any statutory required process and subject to the above conditions. That is my motion. Second?
Motion is second. All in favor say yes.
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 And yes. Motion passes three to zero. So now we'll move to discussion item B. That's an ordinance adopting a division of county code. Ted, that's yours?
Yeah. The proposed ordinance would adopt Article One, Division 19 of County Code relating to the publication of county measures in the state voter's pamphlet, the referral of those measures by a citizen or by the board filing of ballot titles, and the submission of arguments regarding ballot measures. In order to provide information about the upcoming county levy in the state voter's pamphlet, the county must have in place an ordinance that provides a review procedure for the ballot title and explanatory statement. The proposed ordinance satisfies that and other requirements set forth by Oregon law. The adoption of this ordinance may be conducted in accordance with ORS 203.0454, as it does not impose or provide exemption from taxation. And if you'd like me to read the ordinance, I can do that.
Yeah, I think you have to actually read it.
Yes. Okay. In the matter of an ordinance adopting Article One, Division 19 of County Code, State Voter's Pamphlet Code, whereas in order to publicize county measures in the state voter's pamphlet, the county must adopt and comply with an ordinance that provides a review procedure for the ballot title and explanatory statement relating to that measure. And whereas the county does not currently have an adopted ordinance meeting those criteria, and whereas the county finds it appropriate to adopt an ordinance in order to comply with the state of Oregon's requirements for publication of county measures in the state voter's pamphlet. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners, Curry County Commissioners hereby ordains as follows. Section one, this ordinance shall be known, titled this ordinance shall be known as ordinance number 24-01, and may be cited as ordinance adopting Article One, Division 19 of County Code, dash State Voter's Pamphlet Code. Section two, authority, this ordinance is enacted pursuant to the authority of ORS 203.035 and any subsequent amendments thereto. Section three, purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is to codify procedures, including but not limited to the publication of county measures in the state voter's pamphlet, the referral of those measures by a citizen or by the board, filing of ballot titles, and the submission of arguments regarding ballot measures in accordance with ORS 251.285. Section four, adoption, the proceedings, the provisions of this ordinance and the attached Article One, Division 19 incorporated herein by reference are hereby adopted and shall be effective immediately upon adoption of this ordinance and shall remain in force and effect until otherwise ordained by the Board of Curry County Commissioners. Section five, severance clause, if any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance or the attached code or any part thereof is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance or any part thereof. The legislative body hereby declares that it would have passed each section, subsection, subdivision, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase thereof irrespective of the fact that any provision be declared unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Section six, emergency clause, the Curry County Board of Commissioners deems the adoption of this ordinance to be necessary in order to conduct county business in a timely manner. Therefore, it is declared that an emergency exists, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Section seven, effective date, this ordinance shall become effective on the sixth day of March 2024, dated the sixth day of March 2024.
Well, I'd move to fully and completely hereon and therefore pass such ordinance.
I think it should be read again. I don't know if I got all of it.
Don't you have to read it twice?
The second reading?
Is there a second reading?
That's the way we get at it.
I feel like there should be a second reading. Better know.
I don't believe that it's a requirement. I can be compelled to read it again if the, if you were unable to follow the reading.
Well, I think we're good. Discussion?
I'd, what's the ordinance title?
It is.
I can read the motion if you want.
Okay, because I don't have it in front of me.
I move that we approve the proposed ordinance adopting Article One, Division 19 of Curry County Code.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ted. All right. Moving on to the added agenda item number C, which is the banana belt cleanup.
Yeah, so I was made aware of, of this incredible effort and invited April Hempinstall to come and talk about the, the effort itself. And, well, April, do you want to, do you want to come up?
Well, I'll try.
I'll put you on the spot, but.
I get nervous in front of crowds, so.
It's okay. No worries.
Right, right.
All right.
I'm April Hempinstall. I live in Brookings. I am a roofer and trash picker-upper by day and night. I'm involved in the local Rev Limiter's Jeep Club in Brookings, Oregon. We do a cleanup every fall on the river bars. We have a group of, well, the Jeep Club has been growing a little bit each year. So usually it's around 10 to 15 people that, so we do that in the fall. I also am a member of the Gambler 500 group, and so we do cleanups all over the state of Oregon. That's a much rowdier expedition usually, and, and very showmanship also. And so in the fall, when we do the Jeep Club, we sometimes work with the Forest Service. And Elizabeth Hooper and I have gotten pretty close. And she had said that, at the last fall cleanup, that there was a lot of garbage that was being dumped up on Snake Tooth and some of the other Mount Emily sites that we hadn't made it to, and we don't typically make it to in the fall. So I told her that I would get ahold of her at the next available time that I had, that we could maybe take a cruise around and see what we could find. And so then it's been a couple of months, and I reached out to her because there was a post on Facebook. A lot of people were complaining about all these sites. And I have a lot of friends in Brookings, and so we, a lot of us go play in the woods and enjoy our public lands and camp upriver and jeep on Winchuck to Mount Emily and just have a good time. And so more and more people were complaining about the sites. So I called the Forest Service and asked if we could throw something together in a very short amount of time. And then I reached out to everybody that I knew on Facebook and all the public forums, hoping that we could do something as a community. And after that, and then I also spoke with the Sheriff's Department because, because there, we did a pre-rome with the Jeep Club the week before, and there was a couple of sites where we heard people up in the distance, and there was some stray dogs. And obviously, we don't want to push our luck, and, you know, we're not there to harass anybody. We just want to clean up the mess. And so we didn't go any further up that way. But, so I got home, called the Sheriff's Department, asked them if they, you know, could send somebody up in that way. I'm pretty sure they have somebody that goes up routinely. And so they did. And the officer called me back the next day and said that there was a camp up there, and that it was clean, and that, you know, there was no signs of anybody. And so we left that area alone. I know that there was some maybe negative Nancys. There's always a couple of those on the posts. And some, I think some people were worried that we were out there and we were going to try to kick people out of their properties, or maybe worried about us, you know, and dignity and, you know, the homeless. And I just wanted to make it very clear that at no point were we on any properties where there was anybody living, or that there was any sign of anybody trying to live dignitely or dignified. It was trash, and a lot of it. So we had 62 people sign up. I, I also should mention, I reached out to the Oregon Solve. They do a lot of, you know, the waivers and stuff. I also contacted South Coast Lumber to make sure it was okay if we were on their property, because some of the gates, you don't know whose property you're on. So I, I reached out to anybody and everybody that would listen to me. And, and then CTR came in, and they were like, don't worry about trying to come up with all that money, April. We'll give you the dump for free. And so they, they donated two 30-yard dumpsters, which we stacked to the top. And then they let, they opened their doors so we could get our dump trailers in there. So we had approximately 10 to 12 more dump trailers dumped. People filled up the back of their trucks and dumped. It was amazing. We had 62 people show up. I staged at the Upper Chetco School. I threw a big barbecue with the help of volunteers and donations to feed everybody midday. And we high-fived and kicked butt. And we got around 102,000 pounds of garbage. And I would also like to just let everybody know that the river bars are all underwater. So that wasn't even the river bars, other than like the 10 feet of shoreline that you could actually walk. And in the fall, when we did the river bars, there was a couple of campsites where, I mean, we probably would have taken another 20,000 pounds off just Miller Bar. So I'm, I'm not here to say it's a problem or it isn't, or harass anybody. But this is what we do. And there's a lot of local people that obviously are upset about it and would like to figure out a way of preventing it. I don't know how that's possible. And it's not, it would just be my opinion at this point, so it doesn't really matter. But that's what we did. And we had a lot of fun. And there's, I wanted to make sure everybody that, you know, helped make it possible understood that it was all about volunteers and just reaching out to your fellow neighbor. And, and everybody had a good time, and it snowed on us, and nobody complained, and it was a really good day. So.
Very cool. Wow. And you, and you did it all in increment weather?
Yeah.
And.
We did Saturday from 8:00 AM until I was out there until about 7:00.
Wow.
Yeah. It was a great effort by everybody.
Yeah. Well, I want to say, number one, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the crew that you put together. Thank you for organizing it. For you guys that don't know, so they actually, it, it is so organized. They have an app, and they'd gone up previously, identified sites, taken pictures of the areas that were needing attention, proposed the, the amount, the, the proposed amount of garbage in that area. So they knew if they needed a dumpster, or if they needed, they knew what they needed for each site so that people could be very organized in how they addressed those things. It was, it, it, I mean, number one, that's the truest sense of community, right? Stewardship. And, you know, you had mentioned earlier, you know, you said, you know, some people have a problem. Well, I'm going to tell you right now, I don't think any of us are, we, we, I am inspired by your guys' effort. I, it makes me want to have discussions about how we can do more, not only to address these, but to potentially prevent this. You know, how, it, it's, you know, I, it's, it is, it is a, the, the fact that you brought down 102,000. down a hundred and two thousand pounds of trash off of our public lands is, is, well, number one, it's incredible, but also, it's, how did we get there? Right? How did we get to that? Right? And so, I mean, that's the other piece that we really have to answer. And, you know, I, I did, I received an email of, from, from folks who were, you know, essentially trying to prevent you guys from going up there.
I heard Linda's bad also.
Yeah, and so, you know, I guess my next question would be, did you receive any support from, well, just core response, or the St. Timothy's advocacy team?
So I didn't get any, nothing. And that was why I was upset, is because other people were sending concerns about, hey, is this gonna stop? I never, nobody ever reached out to me. Part of the paragraph that he's complaining about, it says about, you know, threatening persons' civil liberties and, I'm sorry, I can come back up there.
Oh, I was just gonna bring it to you.
I'm sorry, I, I get nervous. Sorry, guys.
I know, I just want people to hear what you're saying.
So part of the paragraph in there, he is stating something about civil liberties and, and, you know, something about dignity. And so, A, like I said, we weren't there to kick anybody off property, and we, like, that's not our goal. If somebody is homeless and living up there, kudos to you. I honestly have lived on, on the camp bar myself at one time or another when I was very young, so I, I know that. That doesn't make you a slob. Like, living, being homeless, doesn't make you dirty. And the sites that we were on were non-habitable, and if somebody did live there, they shouldn't. Like, it, it was, they were bad. But, but nobody reached out to me at all, and my name was posted everywhere, on all of the group sites. April Hempinstall's doing this. April Hempinstall's doing this. So he knew enough to reach out to everybody, even the city police, which they have zero, like, they, that's not even their jurisdiction, so why are they getting CC'd? But, so I was a little upset with the fact that he could have just called me. It says I didn't have a plan in, in motion, and that I didn't have the proper planning, was I think one of the statements. And that's not verbatim. I haven't looked at it in a week. But call me and ask me what my planning is, because I laid out every inch of this in two weeks, and I covered every base that I could have, because we do this often with many places. The Gamb, so the app that you're talking about is the Sons of Smokey app. We use it in the Gambler events. I asked everybody that went around if they saw garbage, instead of complaining about it, to mark it on the app, because then I can go through and pick it up, or anybody can, and then you just delete the app. And so, the weekend before, we went around, and that's when I took all the pictures. I did that so I know how many dumpsters roughly I would need per site, so I knew if I could just use a dump trailer, if I needed to have one of the big ones drop there. Unfortunately, we had the snow, which also then took down a bunch of trees, so we were sawing through trees to get our dump trailer, to the dump trailers and the dumpsters, but, so we didn't even make it to a couple of sites, which if you look at the app, you'll see, there's still a couple of sites that weren't finished. But, so that app, you, we use it all year long, everywhere, across the whole state. And then if you see something and you're out on a Sunday afternoon and you want to, oh, look it, we're up North Bank. There's a pile of garbage right there. I have an empty back of my truck. Let's throw it in. Or, it also helps us keep an eye on it, so we know, okay, it's getting bad again. So, the app is amazing, and it doesn't, you have to do, you don't have to put any credit card information or anything. You just put in your, like, name and your email address, and then you open it up, and it's just like your maps. It shows where you are on a satellite image, and you just press and hold, and it gives you the option to put in a little detail and then add pictures, as many as you want. And then, when you're done, it uploads, and there it is. And when you pick up, you just hold it and delete it. It's super easy. We were just asking people to try to get that, you know, people to start using it more, because there's a lot of piles everywhere. I mean, all over the place, that we haven't even come close to seeing yet. And so, that was great with the app. But if he had reached out to me, I could have explained to him that I was working with the Sheriff's Department and working with the Forest Service, with Oregon Solve. We were trying to follow all the rules, even on the pre-cleanup. We didn't go anywhere near anybody. We weren't trying to upset anyone or push people out. But the problem that we're having with a lot of these areas is that they, it's not that they're homeless, it's that they don't respect any of the, of the land that they're staying on. And to say that it's not okay for us to go clean up our public lands is crazy. This is where we take our kids to play and where we spend half of our summers camping, and if we aren't keeping it up to par, then it won't be there for future generations. And the amount of garbage that was left on some of those river bars in the fall, that would have all gone into the ocean, or, and these are our fishing grounds, like.
But it sounds like a lot of it did.
It, well, we cleaned it up.
But the stuff that, the stuff that you could get to?
Well, we got the river bars in the fall.
Oh, okay.
That was laid after we did the ri, the river bar cleanup.
Okay.
Absolutely, but we got all the big sites, and that was like, I want to say that's in September when we did that, or October, so, one of those two months. But anything that was left after that, and there were a few people down there, the people that you run into that are down there living and camping and, you know, that are homeless, they are the first ones to say, hey, do you have an extra garbage bag? Can I throw my stuff in with yours? And we're always like, yeah, absolutely, and if you want to drop it at the thing, the Forest Service will grab it on their way down, you know? So I don't, I don't think it has anything to do with just being homeless. And, you know, we'd like to, a lot of people have asked that we start doing this every year, and that'd be great. The biggest problem we have is the RVs. People drag them up there and dismantle them, and then even if the Sheriff's Department tags them to, for removal, we don't have a tow company. My boyfriend owns Cooter's Towing, you should know also, and so we, we tow down the cars when they're marked, and, and we'll take them. The Gabe from Crescent City came up, and he took them all out for free.
He takes them?
He, he does. He came up to get them. So Cooter's Towing brought them down to get someplace where he could stage for Gabe, and Gabe came up and got them and took them away for us. And all of that, like, that was all their own gas money. That was all everything. We did have some monetary, some monetary donations, and that's how we fed everybody. And so, I don't think that there was a lack of a plan, and I don't think that there was any, any issues to anybody's dignity or their campsites. And so, I would say that I just was, you know, you shouldn't judge, especially as a pastor.
Well, I think some of us can judge. I think we judge that you did a hell of a job.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the greatest thing I've, I've heard in a long time.
And I, I'd just say, well, first, I want to ask you a question, April. On the fall cleanup, how much did you guys take out then?
So on the fall cleanup, typically, the big dumpsters on the river bars are still there because it's like after the camping season, and then the Forest Service takes them away. This year, they, they didn't have them out, and we didn't take the dump trailers and stuff because we usually have the dumpsters. So I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know that at every river bar, we had a huge stack. And then, we had a couple of trailers that had to be dragged out afterwards, and I'm not sure how many pounds, but if I had to guess, I'd say we probably would have filled another, at least another thirty yard and maybe another twenty. Like, there was quite a bit of garbage, but it was spread out over all three, four, because we do South Fork as well. So, still a lot.
And here, I guess the, the other thing is, is in future efforts, reach out to us. I, I think that it's worthy of a conversation on, on, you know, if there's potential for us to, to also assist in some manner. This is, this is, this is what it's all about.
Yeah, we wouldn't have been able to do any of that if CTR hadn't have donated everything, because there's no way that we were gonna come up with enough.
And you're telling me Gabe hauled, hauled all the RVs off?
Nope. We crushed the RVs.
Oh, okay.
With excavators. We had two companies. So Little R Escavators, Excavation is a buddy of ours, and also, Bob has Kleinfelter's.
Yeah, Kleinfelter Contracting.
Yep, so both of them volunteered to come up. And they, because a couple of them, like, the one was huge, the white one that we saw on there, that was a horse, a gooseneck, and we don't have any way of dragging that down. And so the excavators came up, and they ripped the, all the shreds and shoved it in dumpsters and dump trailers, and then we took it down. The cars, Gabe took.
Okay.
I think we got four or five cars down that were marked. And then, a white pickup and a couple of red vans and a couple of other things, but they're, they were already marked, and that we made sure that we didn't take anything that wasn't marked, because we know the rules. And then, there was three trailers up there. One of them, there was a motorhome, which we didn't touch, because it could very easily have been, have, you know, occupied. And then up that little other road that we went off, off the eleven oh seven, had another campsite where people were staying, so we didn't get those two. And maybe there isn't anybody staying there anymore, but I don't know. So the RVs are the biggest thing. I don't know if there's some way to come up with maybe, you know, like, somebody patrols it once a week, and if it's there and you don't see anybody, I don't, I don't really know how to fix this, the problem. Everybody has ideas. But the cars and stuff, those are a lot harder to get out than the trash. And down some of those little roads, one of the biggest encampments that was down there, I don't think a lot of people go down often anyway, but it was like a multi-family, and you could tell people were living there at one point. And that's what, I think that's the whole reason that Elizabeth reached out to me in the first place, is because that encampment was huge. And so, you know.
So April, one thing I'd like you to know is, we have what's called a Lipsec Committee here in the county, and it's, it's the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. And that's basically our sheriff, police chiefs, district attorney, defense attorney, judge, all of our public safety folks attend this meeting. And in anticipation of some of the problems that we're starting to see with some of the RVs at Rainbow Rock, and some of the problems that, that, that you guys at the community worked on this past weekend, I put an agenda item on tomorrow's agenda. We meet at noon, and the agenda item is six A on that agenda. And it's a unified approach to camping ordinance, and I'd like to have a discussion with all of our law enforcement professionals about a coordinated effort to address this problem, whether that is, you know, all of our law enforcement agencies coming together on a specific day, and then going out into the county, the cities, everything, and addressing this problem in a coordinated effort, and having a discussion with the DA. And we, we've got to stop making excuses, and we've got to, we've got to come up with solutions. And I plan on having that conversation with everyone tomorrow at that meeting, and, and hopefully we can come up with some innovative ways to address this. Because, you know, my, my question is, when do we say, as a, as a, as a people, as a county, when do we say, "That's enough"?
Right.
"That's enough"? It's not okay. It's, it's, it's not okay to continue this path.
Right.
And, and, and I think, you know, I'm gonna drive home tonight to Brookings, and we're gonna see in those turnouts, we're gonna see, the, the problem is growing, it's continuing, and, and we have to draw some lines in the sand. So I, I wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
That we are having that meeting tomorrow. Jay, you had a comment?
No, I, I would just echo yours. I mean, that, that is the, the question, right? When, when, when is enough enough? Like, when is, when is, you know, when is? It, I, it's not, it's not okay. It's not legal to go up and just dump your stuff on public land, in anybody's land, on anybody's property.
Right.
And, you know, and, and efforts of, like yours, help definitely keep everything moving forward, but we need a, we need a systematic approach to how we're gonna address this across the board. And, and yeah, I mean, it's, these, this, our children are the ones who are gonna inherit that land, and, and, or what's left of it if we don't do anything. And so, that's, I, that's, you, that effort has prompted a lot of, of thoughts, and I think we, we need to turn thoughts into action in how we move forward.
I look forward to hopefully being a part of that and seeing what you guys come up with, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for inviting me tonight. I appreciate that.
Thank you, April.
Is there a chance I could speak for one for a second on this, regards to this?
Nope. I'm sorry, Lori, we, we've got to stay the, stay the course. All right, any further discussion on, on this? Jay?
No, another thank you to CTR. You know, Gabe, and Cooters, and Bob, and Little R, and then all of the other people who were in attendance.
Yep. All right, so we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is the Red Cross, and I'll, and I'll kick this off. So, if you don't know, this month is, it's Red Cross Month, and if you guys don't mind stepping up to the podium, that would be awesome. And the role that the Red Cross plays in our community, I, I just want to take you back to last year. We had a road closed, and we had half our community cut off to the other half, and we had people with all kinds of problems in terms of getting to medical appointments, getting to work, all that kind of stuff. Then we had a cyber attack, which I think about every day, and then we had forest fires, some big forest fires. And we didn't just have forest fires, we had three big forest fires, all impacting this county at the same time. So you guys played a pivotal role in those events, and especially when it comes to the fires, and you answer your phone right away, and are the first to get involved. And we very much appreciate everything that you do for this county, and, and keeping us, keeping us safe. So, this is definitely something that I support. I know we talked about that a while back, but thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all, all the effort you put in, and we did get your trailer moved to a better spot, too.
Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner Alcorn. And this is Bob Onida. He actually worked in the shelters any number of times this summer. I'm the, many roles, but government liaison for Curry County, and had the opportunity to work with Commissioner Alcorn and Ashley.
Yep.
I actually spoke with Ashley this afternoon. We want to thank you for supporting us and for being there, and for our partnership. And we're definitely here for the community. We both live in Brookings. We have other volunteers throughout Curry, and Kooz, because we kind of partner with them, too. So I just want to thank you very much. And Carissa, my CEO, said we're supposed to get a picture, so I don't know if you want us to come back when you have the certificate or not.
Oh, just get one with Commissioner Alcorn.
Yeah.
I think that'd be appropriate. Right by the flag. I'll take it.
I think that'd be great.
Those were my marching orders.
I had to obscure the flag, Commissioner Alcorn.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, those are great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sure we'll see each other again.
We will. And what I'd like to do is, I think the right way to do this is to approve a resolution proclaiming March to be Red Cross Month.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I think you're appropriate.
Motion and a second? I'll second it.
He seconded it. You motioned it.
Okay, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Toast. So, appreciate that.
Yes.
All right, thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, we appreciate all, everything you do and thank you, I'm sorry I'm telling you, because they throw you, thank you. Bye. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, it's just you guys.
All right, moving on in our agenda is Agenda Item Six, Elected Official Updates. We have two elected officials in the room tonight.
Evening Sheriff Ford, McCurry County Sheriff's Office. I just wanna reiterate on some of the things that were here tonight or what was said, um, especially the, the cleanup that these guys did, uh, we were wholeheartedly supportive of that and uh, we don't know sometimes what to do because, you know, there's so many people out there that are camping or living out in the woods and we kinda wonder how they got there to begin with. And uh, it, it, it's weird that we, you know, there, there are some people that are, are homeless by choice, there's homeless by, you know, situation, but it doesn't give them the right to do what they do to the public out there. I got a call from uh, Ken Wold this morning talking about another big pile of stuff that's down there off one oh one and South Bank, he says whatever you do, you send somebody down there, make sure they're wearing gloves, protective stuff and everything, because there's so much drug paraphernalia and used needles and things like that. These guys are putting their, their health at risk every time they go out and do something like that and I, I just gotta, I can't thank you guys enough for what you do, it helps us.
Can I grab that pile tomorrow? Cause I'm coming down with my dump trailer.
Well, it, some of that stuff is uh, under the ODOT right away and the OSP right away, so I don't have any control over that, but I'm sure that they're not gonna mind, um, but at least reach out to ODOT first.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And um, the other thing, I wanted to come out publicly and state that I am completely in support of the, the levy with, for the twenty-four seven. It's not only gonna give us twenty-four seven coverage, but it's gonna help the entire sheriff's office uh, with the funding. Uh, we have been a training ground for years and ever since I became a sheriff back in nineteen ninety, I've been here for almost thirty-three years, I've been the sheriff for a little over nine years, running for another term, but that's not what I wanna get at, what I'm trying to get at is, uh, we have so much to do and very little time to do it, uh, especially when it comes to funding. The funding's also gonna help us, like I say, the, with our, with our guys that we're trying to hire, we don't have any incentive for them to come here. The pay's low and, and what usually happens when we hire somebody from like a lateral, they come here, they go to work and then they move on when they, or say if we send them to the academy and get them certified, they move on because of the, the pay. If we had something to incentivize them, retain them and that's what a lot of this is gonna, you know, it's an un, um, it's a consequence that many people don't realize, we will have better uh, things for people to attract them and retain them and we should be able to do the best we can with more resources. We do the best we can with what resource we have, but we need twenty-four seven and I, I can't send people out there uh, without not, without having the resources and expect them to work, you know, at the night by themselves, responding to priority calls, uh, domestic violences, it's just not safe, it's a, it's liability and, and we hold the most liability there is in the county with the sheriff's office. So, supporting the, the levy is, it's got to be our number one priority, we gotta get some funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff.
Hey, hold on just a sec Sheriff, while you're up there, um, one thing I wanna reiterate is uh, you know, we, we, we talk about this a lot, but you know, it's not just, it, the ripple effects of having a twenty-four hour patrol service, public safety, um, and, and the ability to have a bolstered um, program, a public safety program, you know, deputies, jail, DA, the whole nine, right?
Right.
Allows, the ripple effects are tremendous, right? The, the, public safety is the foundation for our community, you know, without, without safety, it's, you cannot flourish, your quality of life is diminished and so when we're talking about just the public safety portion, what we're really talking about is creating the foundation for a supportive community to be able to, not only, not only are we trying to recruit, you know, professional deputies, we're, we're, we're talking about medical staff, we're talking about educators, we're talking about different professionals that would need to come, to come into our area to service other people, you know, our, our community and if we don't have the basic foundation of having safety, it's not, it's not an attractant to all those other assets, right? And so.
Insurance rates go up, uh, without it?
Absolutely, so, you know, when we're, when we're trying to move forward with this levy, it, it's not, there's, the, it's so multifaceted and the ripple effects touch every single individual uh, that lives in Curry County and in, in, inevitably increases the quality of life, um, for everybody involved and so I, I just wanted to echo what you just said and, and, and thank you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you John.
And I don't have any other updates to tell you, I mean, we've been very, very busy at the sheriff's office, we, we, I, I couldn't tell you with, with, with that um, that ransomware attack, we lost all our data from uh, last May on for twenty years, it's all gone and we're just trying to rebuild and uh, do the best we can.
Thank you Sheriff.
Well, thank you Sheriff.
Treasurer Barnes.
David Barnes, County Treasurer. I want to um, also express my support for the upcoming levy vote. I've been the treasurer here for three years, but even before that, a couple of years before that, I was in talking to the sheriff about different ways to get his department funded. It's something that I've been working on for a long time. As treasurer and even before, I explored and studied things like a sales tax for the county, a toll on our southern border, um, different tax increases, I, I've looked at pretty much everything that I can think of and there's nothing that is that, this is the only way to increase our funding. It, it's sad that we've come to that, but we're just, I've looked at it all, you know, I, every check that's gone out of here in the last three years has gone out under my signature and we don't waste money here. That's one thing we do not do, we don't waste, we get the most bang for our buck that we can. Our, our elected officials, past and present, our department heads, past and present, should get a lot of credit for going out and finding grant money to help support their efforts in their offices over the years. Without that, we'd be in worse economic shape than we are and I just wanna let the people know right now that, you know, this is, yes, it, it is, it is a levy and it's something new, but we all look at the news, we all watch the news, we all see what's happening in the outside world, it's not gonna stay away from here forever. Like Commissioner Tros said, you know, there's a ripple effect and if people know that this is a place, I was told back in the sixties and seventies that if somebody showed up at one end of the county looking like me, they looked like Commissioner Alcorn by the time they got to the other. We had a reputation back then, you know, I didn't live here, but this county had a reputation and it's something that will, you know, we need to have again going forward. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you Dave.
I think that was just a hairline.
You think that was what it was?
That wasn't personal insult.
No, I took it as a compliment. Oh, okay, moving on to uh, number seven, which is Commissioner Updates, Commissioner Herzog, you're up first.
I just wanna say, it was a great meeting, um, just the positivity of it all was just fantastic and inspiring, um, I'm just proud to be a commissioner for Curry County and I can't thank you enough for what you did on that cleanup, um, the Red Cross, everything, so that's it. And going forward, we're just, we gotta just keep moving, like you said, I'm anxious to hear what you guys come up with at Lipsec, but we gotta, we gotta do the right thing and it's never wrong to do the right thing and cleaning up our county is A number one right now, I think.
Yep. Commissioner Tros.
Um, just gonna echo, I, you know, first of all, thank you April for coming, um, and thank you for everything that you guys have been doing and did this weekend. Um, and uh, I am also very interested to see how the Lipsec uh, meeting goes tomorrow with that discussion and if you're able to make uh, progress in, in that direction. Um, the other thing that I'd like to talk about potentially is um, you know, if we uh, wanna look at uh, at some of our current ordinances, um, particularly when it comes to offensive littering and things of that nature, um, you know, increasing the, the penalties, the consequences, um, uh, just, you know, just doing, taking those, some of our current ordinances and, and, and seeing if the language fits today's dilemmas, um, because the dilemmas have developed and um, we need to make sure that they, they are aligned.
Got some teeth.
Yeah, that's, you know, I, I doubt that in the, in the past, we had to consider um, a uh, fifth wheel uh, as offensive, littering, you know, and if it comes with the same four hundred and twenty dollar um, offense as, 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 as some, as a bag of trash.
Well, I also think that, I mean, when we're talking about things like the river bar that's filled up with stuff and then the water comes up, I'm, I'm sorry, but jurisdiction, who is in charge of that is responsible for the pollution that then goes into the river that, that affects everybody else and, and we just need to have, you know, everybody needs to be responsi, I, I'm, you know, if you're gonna allow that sort of, sort of activity to go on, on the river bars that you are overseeing, then you should be financially responsible for the, for the outcomes and that, and, and having all that stuff going down into the, going, going down into, into the river and out into the ocean, um, that's not, that's not okay, that's not acceptable. And, and you, have you ever, I, actually I was doing a, um, I was, I had an underwater camera and we were doing an EPA survey for, when we were doing our dredging at the port, there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of stuff right outside, right outside the mouth of the jetco that shouldn't be there and this is part of, this is part of the problem and, and, and I think, you know, I mean, if you're gonna, if it's gonna happen, then, then they should be contributing directly to the cleanup and, and taking responsibility for that.
Yeah, no.
We, we grew, I mean, a lot of us grew up on those river bars, I'll tell you, that never happened, that wasn't, you know, maybe there might've been a car that, that went over the bank somewhere and, and nobody noticed it for a couple of years and somehow it ended up in the river, but it was not, it was nothing like what we're seeing now, this is, yeah, yeah, it was, it was just not, it was, this is, this is, this is like it's orchestrated, I mean, it's, it's just, it's, it's offensive to a degree that I, it's hard to, hard to fathom.
Yeah. And uh, so I'd like to explore what those look like, at least bring them back, um, and uh, you know, make sure that, make sure they match what, what we're trying to work through and uh, and then potential other, um.
Add some ordinance.
Add some ordinances maybe, is maybe the answer, um, to, you know, and, and, and increase our, our stewardship of our, our community. Um, and uh, outside of that, um, I have nothing else.
And real quick Brad, Brad, just before we go to you, we need to look at what we're gonna do with uh, Social Security Bar this year, cause summer's coming quicker and, you know, and we really haven't, we, you know, we talked about it last year and.
I think we're waiting on some, uh, on Brookings.
No, uh, I'll give you a quick update, so I did, I went down, I showed, um, I showed Charles uh, that, that property, um, and then also took him out to McVeigh. Um, and so I think at that point in time, it, it was the, kind of the, the decision was, it's still yet to be made, I mean Ted, Ted has to get with Charles, we have to make a decision on how we wanna proceed, but I think the sentiment was, hey, we, we have to develop, we have to develop Boy's Cope Two, we um, are potentially looking to start working on McVeigh, um, with the state and uh, it might be, uh, it might be too much of a bite to try to take on Social Security at the same time and do the other ones justice as well. Um, you know, so it, it, we just need to evaluate it, but that, that's essentially where we, where we stand with, where we are with Social Security Bar.
Because I'm, I'm just thinking, McVeigh Park, I, I know that's a huge, it's a, it's a bonus if we could, you know, get that from the state, but Social Security Bar is a problem and we have those numerous families come and, and speak to that and uh, personally I'd just like to go with that because McVeigh Park, the citizens that live out there are taking care of that pretty much with that dog park and everything, so I don't know, I...
I think, well, in my recent conversations with the state regarding McVeigh Park, um, we kind of agreed that we'd move forward and just assist them.
In managing it.
In managing it, so that we could, we could add some resources, cause it's difficult for them to, to keep in mode and do some of the things that maybe we can do better in that locale for them. Regarding, um, regarding Social Security, I, I, you know, I mean, I'd like to move forward on that too, it's just that, you know, I keep getting kinda mixed signals, so from, we still have several different jurisdictions that we're dealing with.
Division of State Lands, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
DSO and City of Brookings. Um, on that topic, sorry, one more thing just popped in my head about, uh, so Ted, would it be, on this other topic about adjusting as the time is, um, would it be prudent of us to look at uh, the road department in, investing in a, in a tow?
Um, I'm not against it, I, depends on, depends on, yeah, I mean, we're looking at a, there are a couple of, it's difficult with the equipment that we have right now to address some of these larger um, RVs that'll get left on county rightaways, we've got one that we're gonna go, be dealing with in the next few days that, that, you know, we're, it's, it's tough to get them on a, on a, um, on a Lowboy or how, so yeah, I, I'd thought about that, um, getting a big, you know, big tow rig, something like that that we could really move stuff around with if we had to and we could probably buy one used for not, not too crazy a price, uh, something to look at.
I like what these folks did with that excavator, let's just comp them up and put them in the back of a dump truck or.
They're going into a lot of problems when you're uh, trying to tow them anyway because ninety percent of them don't have tires.
Right.
Or the hitches are busted and so there's no way of dragging them, only because of the tow company doing this.
Right.
Cause we are frequently called during.
Yeah, like that, the one that we're looking at doesn't have tires on one side and so all of a sudden we're in a.
The other one had no, the hitch was busted off, so, and then even if you did try to get one moving, a lot of the problem is there's so much debris inside that, and half.
Stuff's gonna fall out.
Then you're just trading, calling all the trucks. So the excavator and the dump trailer, I mean, an excavator, you're probably gonna find a, they were a smaller one, so you could probably get a used one fairly cheap and a dump trailer, you can get for like eight grand, you can fit one of them in.
We got dump trucks and we got an excavator on wheels, right?
Oh yeah.
Well, we've, we've removed a few that way, however, you know, let's just fast forward, Lipsec says, okay, we're gonna have a consolidated effort, the ORS says, we have to tag them seventy-two hours, in seventy-two hours we come back, they're still here, we remove them. Now we have to, some of the, the ones that are, we know are used for day-to-day, we have to hold for thirty days, right? So those are the ones that I'm more concerned about getting off the roads right now, uh, yeah, we can use the excavator and the Lowboy and we can haul those other, other ones out, but you, if you guys remember, when we had that meeting with ODOT, OSP, state parks, addressing the, all this one oh one stuff, that night, on a drive home from, a Sunday night drive home from Salem, from Port Orford to Rainbow Rock, thirty-nine RVs on the side of the road and those ones, we, those ones can be, you know what I mean, like that, those ones are obviously, they were just rolled in, they can be rolled out of some, you know, so, um, you know, I think, um, that's the ones that I'm thinking of more on the tow.
Also, by the way, it's not a sign of mental illness to avail yourself of a free spot for your RV, that's just a sign of, of selfishness and, and exploitation, so those people that are doing that, I, I, are, are using protections that are, that are, that shouldn't be availed to them. They should be charged to park in, in a place like, at Rainbow Rock lookout, you should be paying premium rates for that. If you're gonna park on pavement, you should be paying, I don't know, whatever, sixty bucks a night for a dry camp spot with a view like that, see how long they stay if that happens.
Well. Well-
He is starting on that, because I heard him go out to that one on 80 acres today and-
Oh, good.
Good.
For, he's legal camping.
Oh, perfect. Well, that's a good start. And here's the other thing, Ted, when I was driving down the road, and all of you have seen it, there are the ones that are there. They've been there since early summer, right? We're talking eight months.
Mm-hmm, or more.
However, in the summertime, what happens is folks who are just actually traveling see that and assume that they can do the exact same thing. So now you're, those, those, those RV, those RV resorts, those RV parks, those, you know, now they're losing out on, on potential revenue. The county's losing TLT. And, and those are folks who would actually be normally pulling into camp somewhere, but they see an allowable use on the side of our road that's ocean view. They're like, why not? Why wouldn't we? Pull right over and, 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 you know, and put down the leveling jacks.
Do the math, and you add that up for every night in the summer, just the people that are coming in and, and taking advantage of that. That's a big bite out of the revenue that, you know, I think, I think Curry County has something like $60 million in tourist revenue normally. Well, how much would it be if people were actually paying?
Well, we did the math. And on an average of like that, we were essentially losing out on a potential of $95,000 in just TLT. And when you take TLT, that's 7% of what the economy would have received had they been paying to stay in a spot, right? So we're not talking nickels and dimes, you know. So that, yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Good discussion.
So I'll, I'll close this out. So I mentioned the Lipstick meeting tomorrow, and then Friday I've got the Southwest Area Transportation meeting with ODOT, where we'll be discussing all topics related to our roads system here in Curry County. We have that meeting regularly. I want to talk briefly, just for a second, about the levy. I've gotten some phone calls, some emails with folks asking for more information. And I just want to emphasize to the public that, I know you have a meeting about this tomorrow, that we will have a website that is coming out. That website will have very detailed information. We will be having multiple town halls to discuss the levy, the ins and outs of the levy, what you are getting for the money that you're, you'll be paying, and answering questions of the public at those town halls. And we'll be publicizing those dates, times, and locations here in the near future. And I just want to point out that when we have 62 members of the community that have to organize their own effort to go out into our county and do the things that they did over the weekend, collect the volume of trash over the weekend, if that's not a reflection of the increasing burden on public safety and the need for a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week sheriff's department, I don't know what else is. That is a reflection of how this community is changing in a negative way, and it's also a reflection for the strong need that we have for a 24/7 sheriff's department. Because criminals know when we don't have deputies on duty. Criminals know when our law enforcement is most vulnerable. And that's when they're very active. And this is a opportunity for the community to say, that's enough, and we're going to change it. And I look forward to having the conversations that, that I've had several individual conversations about the details of the levy. And I look forward to having those conversations in public and sharing that information. And also, I invite anyone in the public to call me, email me, meet with me, and we can have individual conversations about it as well. I know it's a, I know it's a burden. I know it's a problem. I know we have an aging population here, and, and every penny matters right now in this, in this state where we're the, we're the 10th most expensive state to live in in the United States. And I, and I know it's a burden, but we also have a very changing community, and we have a strong need to increase our public safety. And, and we're going to do everything we can to do that. And that, that's all I have. So no further discussion. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.